All right, everybody's here. Good evening. It is seven o'clock. Can I please have a motion to reconvene into open session? Motion made by Dawn, seconded by
Jimenez.
Seconded by Jimenez. To reconvene closed session at 7:00 PM on the dot. On the roll call, IRNA, please.
Aye.
Dawn, aye. White Legrand.
Absent with notice.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Dressel.
Aye.
Jimenez.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, can I have the roll call to establish the quorum, please? Present.
Dressel.
Present.
Dawn, here. Jimenez. Steinfeld.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Here's okay, too. Okay, thank you. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. I will turn it over to Superintendent Havas.
All right, good for everyone, and thanks for being here on this first day of school in District 100. I think it's the first time we've ever had the first day of school and our board meeting on the same day. So, we're celebrating our first day of school today in District 100. So, we have a few, we have one major presentation tonight. We have our preschool team here to spotlight and share the absolutely amazing work that happens in preschool. So, I'd like to introduce Amanda Thompson, who is our preschool director, and she's going to introduce her team and share with the board and everyone watching a little bit about our preschool.
I like to project myself, I guess. Okay, so we have, I can be loud, yeah. We have one early childhood special education classroom, and it's at Irving School. It's five days a week. It's for children who are three to five. We have preschool for all classrooms, which are half-day programs, again, for children who are ages three to five. And for those classrooms, we're at the Children's Center, which is on 26th Street and Riverside Drive. We're at Hayawatha, Irving, Kamenski, and Pershing. Under that grant, we service 200 kids. We also have preschool for all expansion grants. This is a full-day program. This is for children who have one more year till they go to kindergarten. And we have those at Hayawatha, Kamenski, and Pershing. Under that grant, we have the ability to service 60 kids. That's Jan's room right there. You see kids digging away. She's building a, what were you building? All I remember is she was teaching the word "foundation" when she was building this. Do you remember that? Yeah, you were. They were building dog houses, and she kept talking about how you had to start with the foundation, so. And then her children were making a pet house, a pet shop there, and they've labeled it very nicely with "birds and dogs." Okay, so, we also partner with the Park District, and so, again, that's a five-day-a-week program. That is housed at Praska Park. Right now, we're just servicing 15 children in that program. And this picture is actually not at Praska Park. This is from Kamenski School. And the kids here, maybe you just see kids playing with blocks and babies and whatnot. But what's really happening is the children in this picture are working on measuring. And so, the teacher didn't introduce the concept of measuring right before they went to play, and then they were using different tools to measure while they were playing. So, they're using a tape measure, a little measuring thing for the baby, so, just so you know what you're looking at. All right, so, you want to tell them what you made?
Sure.
Okay.
Last break, I made a short video.
Sure.
Short. So, I made a short video about a day in the life of a preschooler. And in our video, you will see the components of our preschool day, and with such highlights such as the morning song, whole group, small group, gross motor, choice time, and some community connections. For the expansion day, you'll also see lunch and nap time. Well, this is what happens when you go to preschool.
La, 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 la. When I walk up today, I shout it out, "Hooray!" Because I knew I'd see you could stay together. La, 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 la.
All right, that's us. Thank you, Amy, for making that nice video. Now, I know we're all desperately missing our little friends and we can't wait till Monday, till they're all back in our classrooms. So, um, tonight, I'm going to share a little bit about you, about the accountability and monitoring system that's in place for early childhood. So as part of the early childhood grants that we receive, the state has an accountability system where they monitor the programs to ensure that we're providing high-quality preschool programming. So last year, our program, um, was notified and we participated in the monitoring program. It's in every three-year cycle for all the early childhood programs. So there's two components to the monitoring system. One of them, um, is the compliance component and the other one is the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale. So the compliance component is, um, simply that. It's a list of compliance measures. For Preschool For All, it's 20 measures. For Preschool For All Expansion, it's 37 measures. So essentially, it looks at like, kind of, do we have all of our ducks in a row? Do we have the right child ratio? Do we do screenings? Do we use a research-based curriculum? Do all of our teachers have the proper certifications? Do all of our paraprofessionals have the right certifications? Do we run the right number of hours? Do we go the right number of days? Do we have all the proper things in children's files? So it's just kind of all the nuts and bolts. Um, we were 100% compliant, so we had all that stuff in place, so that's great. So, then we have, um, the second part of the, um, monitoring system is, they come into our classrooms and because we're spread out in all different locations, they actually visit every single one of our classrooms. Um, and so the monitors come in and they use something called the, um, Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale. And so it's a scale that's used to measure quality program within an early childhood room. Um, and you might wonder, like, why is it focused on environment? So, within early childhood, the environment is almost considered the textbook of the classroom. Um, it is our teaching strategy. We talk about teaching strategies for different, you know, older kids and different programs, but with an early childhood, we strategically build our environment so children can learn and explore and play. So that's why they come in and it is heavily focused on the environment. So they come in with their checklist and they see if the teachers are doing all these kinds of things. So it focuses on a few specific areas to see if we have the correct space and furnishings, um, if we have personal care routines in place. And then it focuses on things such as language and literacy, so it's, they're actually following our staff around, all staff who are in the rooms, to listen to, like, what kind of language they're using? How are they encouraging children to use language? Are they using higher-order questions when they talk to children? Are they producing opportunities for children to expand language? So they're literally following my staff around. We had a kid this year be like, "Do you know that person's following you?" But they were supposed to, yes. We know, we're fully aware. But, um, then they also look at our learning activities to see, like, do we have science area? Do we have a writing area? Do we have all the specific math materials in the classroom? Um, let's see what else. Another key area that they look at is the interactions. So the interactions between our staff and children, the interactions between children to children. So they see how are teachers responding to challenging behaviors? How are they comforting children? How are they redirecting children? Um, let's see what else they're looking at. They're also look at the program structure, so they'll look at the teacher's day, the required, so the different components that you saw in the video, like, you saw a small group, a whole group, you saw a choice time, you saw gross motor time. So within our program, we're supposed to allocate certain amounts of time for each of those periods. So they're coming in and watching, like, are you really doing what you wrote in your compliance file that you're doing? So, um, all right, so, they came in, they monitored, they checked us all out. Um, and, and we passed, we passed with flying colors. So, in early ti- um, the state of Illinois has a system called Accelerate Illinois, and so this is what they use to rank different early childhood programs. So there's different areas you can be. You can be licensed, so it's kind of bare minimum, we got, we have the doors open, right? You can be bronze, silver, gold, is the highest quality of standard. And so our programs were rated gold, um, at every single location. So, very proud of that. Kudos to all those people that, and all my team that's not here, they work very hard to ensure that we maintain gold. Berwyn South has had, has stayed gold for our past, this is our third monitoring rotation in a row where we were gold, and that's as long as Accelerate has existed, so that's why. So, um, and now I just want to show you, so, why does the state of Illinois have all these monitoring systems in place, right? So they want to know if, you know, they're giving funds to school districts or private entities to run these programs, they want to ensure that they're, I keep saying, high quality. So high-quality programming is supposed to be best for children. So I told you, we had all our paperwork in place, that classrooms looked perfect, the teacher interactions looked perfect, but what did it do for our kids? Right? Because that's what's most important. So, I put together a few slides of data, we don't actually have to look at all of it, but this just starts with where our fall data started. I don't know how well you can see it, these are the widely-held expectations that we monitor within early childhood. So it includes social, emotional, physical development, language, cognitive, literacy, um, and mathematics. And so these are just different ranges of, like, where our children started. So this is our fall data, we report data, um, three times a year. We do a fall, winter, and spring. Um, we do assessments through, um, an authentic observational assessment model, so our teachers assess children as they're playing. So this is our spring data, but I'm just going to show you, um, this is like the end of the year, you can see our continuum of growth. So the percentage of children who we're meeting or exceeding, um, it's age-level expectations. So you can see in the fall, when we met them, that, that's like a late October, early November date, 51% were there, but by the spring, we had 88%. Um, mathematics also, we saw a very significant gain, and language, and social-emotional development. So, I just kind of made this little thing at the end here, like, what does this mean? So program-wide, we saw an increase in the following areas, um, and I just listed the percentages of, um, all that. So, I just wanted to share that, if that's what a quality program does for your kids. So, very proud of all that, and proud of all these people. So, they work very hard to make this happen, so. All right, and this is just, um, another little fun fact about us. So, our program implements teaching strategies, um, creative curriculum in our classrooms, so it is our research-based program, our curriculum that we use. Um, we have been named an ambassador program for them, so that means that we, we've been, they've noticed us, because we implement the curriculum with fidelity. So we've been chosen as a model program, we're the first in the Midwest, so I'm very proud of this. Um, and they're going to come in and, a nice benefit to us is we're getting some coaching through them to continue to improve our programs. And then also, our programs will be used as a model, um, for when other programs are looking to, um, begin this curriculum, they'll come visit, um, our sites, so, and learn from us. And this is from their website, um, they have a link of just like success stories and things to know, and I was literally clicking through it one night, so I was like, oh, let me see what other programs are doing, and I was like, wait, that's us! And so, um, if you're ever bored, you can go to the Teaching Strategies site and click on that, and there's a nice blog, um, about Berwyn South, so, it's pretty fun. All right, I think that's all we have. Yes, thank you so much for letting me share, thank you, um, from the bottom of my heart for supporting early childhood in this district. I lead a unmandated program, right? You don't have to provide early childhood services, um, to the kids in the community. You only have to provide early childhood services to your special education students. So, um, I thank you for allowing this program to occur in this district, so, thank you. Have a great night.
I just want to say thank you to Amanda, because she is clearly the captain of our ship and she keeps us going and keeps us afloat, and, so, kudos for Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing the preschool story and highlighting all of the successes. Um, it is so important to District 100 and to what we do, um, to really have those quality programs for our youngest students. Um, that sets the foundation for, um, their growth throughout all of their years in District 100, and to see that kind of growth last year, um, in our students, it's, it's amazing. And, um, we have an excellent preschool team, and while Amanda talked about the ambassador program, they have also been leaders in the state in sharing, um, best practices across districts in, um, in Illinois about what's happening here in District 100, and particularly what they were able to accomplish during COVID, and, and having preschool programs remotely and involving parents. And I think we learned a lot about how we can truly partner with our parents, um, to help continue that growth in all of our students during the school day as well as after school. So, thank you to our preschool team, you are amazing, and we are fortunate to have you here in District 100. So, one more round of applause. Um, and so, uh, onto our first day of school today and our back-to-school. Um, so we, while today was the first day for students, we have been, um, preparing and planning for our first day of school and kicking off the school year for quite some time. Um, beginning last week, we kicked off our new teacher week, and then we had some institute days. Um, so I wanted, so Bee's going to share a little bit about what we've been doing with our staff, um, to prepare for the start of the school year.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
To, um, so I, Amanda, I saw that in the, in your chart, you had, um, in, and it was 0% on the Spanish language and Spanish literacy. Do we not have any of our preschools that are dual-language or bilingual? I'm not sure what you would call them now?
Like, we do not have dual-language, and, um, can we be, who have one? Uh, it's just a conversation that we have all started, and then I talked to you, definitely gold for us to have one, so, there's a man, and I have questions, and I am about it, so...
Well, I, I just think that...
We're 100% on our radar.
Well, and thank you for everything that you're doing, it is amazing, uh, but I do...
That is one of the indicators that you do can measure, which is something I like about my curriculum, because I really do respect the difference in language, so, and our typical is only available in Spanish, but we write, um, definitely that's a good option.
Thank you, because I think that preschool and then go to kindergarten, or, where does dual-language begin in kindergarten? Then they already have more language, uh, English acquisition, so therefore, the Spanish is lacking, and that's where it's very difficult for students when they go to a higher grade and then to another grade, because the foundation of the bilingual literacy or dual is not there, so, I'm, I'm glad that you're looking forward to that, thank you.
And, and I think it's something that Amanda has continuously looked for. The challenge, I think, comes with, um, a preschool teacher has to be certified in preschool and an ESL bilingual. Special education, what am I missing?
You got it.
I think I got that right, and so, to find four certifications and a dual-language teacher has been challenging, but Amanda keeps looking, and every year, it's something that is absolutely on the radar, and she's so close, I think we're going to, you know, try to do some, some growing...
And another exciting thing, oh, wait, oh, give me... We're fortunate enough to have teacher assistants that speak Spanish in our classrooms. So when you go in our classrooms, you do hear Spanish? And our teacher assistants do read books to kids in Spanish, and, so there is instruction in both?
All teachers are certified in ESL, and there is a bilingual, um, paraprofessional in there.
Yeah, when we met yesterday as a team, we were very excited, because three of our professionals are bilingual, who are all currently having meetings right now, so I love that we're being totally known within our team, and we're worried about that, so I'm very excited about that.
No, no, that's okay. All right, so last week, uh, we, uh, launched our new teacher, new staff, welcome. We had four days, uh, full of a variety of things. First, new teachers came and, you know, they learned all about content and equity and PBIS. They met their mentors, who are going to be with them throughout the year. Um, you know, they, they learned, uh, you know, they, they had an innovation playground, one of the days where they just learned all about, you know, the variety of tools that we have at our disposal here in District 100. But I think the highlight of the entire week was the Berwyn Bus Tour that they, we brought back. We used to have a Berwyn Bus Tour, and I think, um, you know, when Amanda was hired, I think probably when I was hired, when a lot of us were hired, we went on this Berwyn Bus Tour, and then for a variety of reasons, you know, we didn't have it anymore. Um, but we brought it back, and it was led by, uh, Principal Deanna Yakobasi, or Bass, and, um, instructional coach Mona Towner, and they provided the history, they went to every single site, every principal and assistant principal, and a variety of staff came out and greeted all of the teachers. They, uh, I mean, they walked in and raved about it. Um, Lindsay Cindy created a Berwyn Bytes, which was like an app, I don't even remember the, the name of the app, but anyway, it was an app that had South Berwyn businesses that teachers could frequent, and they were all like, you would click on a business and it would tell you, okay, well, you can go to Sub Sandwiches or get salads here. And so after the bus tour, I was sitting in here, and every teacher that came in, walked in with something from Berwyn Bytes, like, they had gone to lunch and picked it up and brought it back, which was really cool to see. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure we'll share it, maybe Mary will, will send you the link to Berwyn Bytes, so that in case you want to frequent. Um, businesses gave, you know, coupons, you know, like free car washes to teachers, and so those were in their little goodie bags that they, that they received. So that was New Teacher Week, and then for the last two days, we've had a variety of days full of learning. Um, Monday, Dr. Havas, uh, talked about, you know, we, we've shared about the keynote that really was very positive, you know, she gave us the, um, the state of our district. Um, but I think the most impactful certainly was the celebrations that families and kids, you know, sent in for our teachers, thanking them, saying how much they looked forward to seeing them. I think that that was really, um, you know, just really, really positive to, to start our year. Um, yesterday, we had a focus on student learning and student supports throughout our district. Um, elementary teachers met here at Heritage, middle school teachers met at Freedom, uh, we bussed everybody to their locations, we focused on, um, learning all about MTSS, which is the Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports, phonics, um, looking at some of the core resources and supplemental resources and diving into those, um, fonética and gramatica, paper, map accelerator, fast bridge, um, and all of this was led by a variety of team members, including our assistant principals, who took a, a really strong lead with MTSS, and our coaches and coordinators, um, and then a variety of other individuals. So thank all of them for all of their work, and all of our teachers for all of the learning that they did. Thank you.
Yes, there is never enough time, we feel, uh, as we're getting ready for the school year, but I really do want to acknowledge Bee and the Teaching and Learning Team, our building administrators, coaches, coordinators, teacher leaders from all across the district, uh, Myrna and Karina for organizing some really special, just fun events. Um, it really is a whole group that comes together to try to make sure that we're meeting the needs, um, of, for professional development for, for our staff. And we know those first few days, what's on everybody's mind is, I want to get my classroom ready, and I can't wait to meet my kids, um, and, and we're also doing a lot of learning. So, um, we, we are grateful for all the people that really contribute to, to those institute days, because it takes a lot, um, to, to make sure we meet the needs of hundreds of people, um, and that we're preparing everyone for the start of the school year. So, thank you to everyone involved for institute days. Um, we did share some, um, information, as we said, uh, today was our first day, we had the majority of our students registered, um, it was, it was a smoother process, we did a lot of work trying to get students registered in this, in the spring this year, so we could avoid really, you know, the, the first day of school where some students aren't registered yet, we had much less of that this year. Um, we got, got around to different buildings and it was just, the kids were in their classrooms, they were ready to go, um, so that was really exciting. Uh, we did share some communication with families just around the continuation of, um, you know, safety, security, as well as, um, health. Uh, so we're making sure that we're continuing to provide our, uh, shield testing for anyone who's interested, um, as well as Bi-Nex Now. Um, so that information has been going out to our families, um, to make sure there's an awareness there. And in the next few weeks, they will get, have curriculum nights where parents are going to be able to come into the schools and hear more specifically about what's happening in the classroom. So, um, it's always a busy start, but a, a fun and exciting start, so. Day one, check, we have, all of our kids have been in, and preschool is coming soon, right? Monday. So, we're, we're waiting, and in preschool, we'll be really excited to join us on Monday. And so, kind of going from back-to-school into, uh, our next one, which is summer construction, um, I do want to acknowledge our maintenance and custodial staff, George and Paulino in the back. They have been working non-stop, tirelessly, nights, weekends, around ongoing construction to get our schools ready. Um, we were literally finishing things up Monday and Tuesday, um, as we've talked about, we've had some construction delays throughout the summer that we've, um, have caused some delays in equipment arriving, um, and so, there is still work ongoing in several of our schools. There, there is kind of some workarounds in places, we do have our ventilation units in at Hiawatha, however, um, there's still some work that needs to be done to get them hooked up with ComEd and our, um, our contractors. Um, so right now, we're utilizing, utilizing our window air conditioners, um, until that point. We also have our, a couple delays at our gyms at Pershing and Irving. Um, so right now, those units are not quite yet running, um, we are working with our contractors to make sure they're getting, getting, uh, running as soon as possible. Um, if you remember, we had significant delays in their arrival. Um, and again, it's, it's kind of out of everyone's hands, it's, it's waiting on, um, shipping delays and, um, manufacturing delays, and then all of the right people that can come in and get all of these things hooked up and ready. Um, so, those, some of that work is ongoing, we also have much that was completed, we have, um, Irving's Playground is done, and their fencing is up, Emerson's Playground, uh, has been completed, Piper's Intercom System is in, just needs to do some training with the staff to learn how to u- to utilize that system. So we have many projects complete, um, but there will be some ongoing work for the next several weeks. Will not interrupt the classroom day, it will take place outside the school day, um, and also on weekends, but, um, our custo- maintenance custodial staff went above and beyond to be able to make sure our schools were clean, ready, um, for, for our kids today. And I don't think our kids noticed, right? They're, they're happy to be there, and they're smiling faces, and they don't know all the things that went into getting those schools ready, so. Um, George, Paulino, am I missing anything for our summer project updates? Nope? Okay. They're very tired. Yes, the good news is, schools across the country are getting all of these, um, upgrades and ventilation and, um, but when schools across the country are all putting all of these things in at the same time, um, there's certainly, certainly some delays, but it, in the end, it's going to be, um, create even better learning environments for our students, um, and you will, we have already put out a bid for next summer's projects, so we're getting an early start, so we can hopefully get things in earlier next year. Um, so that is our summer construction update. We did have three FOIA's this month that were submitted. Um, in your board book, there is an updated registration document. Um, normally, we would have an enrollment report at our August board meeting, however, with us starting a week later, um, we don't have the updated enrollment yet, because today was the first day of school. So we will have an updated enrollment for you in September, but you can see on the registration report that we have about 2,500 students that have submitted their registration, so we are, we have the majority of our students registered and starting, and those that have not registered, um, we have been reaching out to, to ensure that they get registered at school, or to determine have they moved, um, so we want to make sure that we are keeping track of our students and getting them registered if they haven't done that yet. Um, so you can take a look at those in board book. And I will turn it over to Jenny for the financial report.
Sure, thanks, Mary. Um, our bank balance as of today is 50.8 million, of which, if you recall, 10.3 million was moved into investments. Um, we have begun with the investments, they are invested in treasury bills with an average rate of about 2.4%, which is very good. Um, our revenue for the month of August to date is 3.1 million, and then our cash flow for the month of, pardon me, the month of July was very low. Our revenue was only 1.3 million, um, and our expenses was 3.5 million. Remember, that is normally, we would receive tax revenue, but that tax revenue is now not due to rec- to come in until December or January. So part of our investments that we did, they're short-term investments, so that should we need to have to pull some of that back, we can, that we're not locked into it. Um, Jim, if you can go to the grant snapshot, this will be the end of the grant snapshot for, this is the end of last year's grant snapshot, so next month, you'll see the beginning of the new one. Um, the grants are starting to get closed out, new grants are starting to get written for the new year. I just wanted to call something out while we're on a preschool event, um, or preschool night. Amanda not only does an amazing job running the preschool program, but she oversees seven different grants, and she is relentless in bringing in money for, to support our preschool program. So while I heard her say up here that while preschool is not mandated and we offer it, she brings in $2 million to fund our preschool program, so nice job.
I like reading her.
I know you do. And you're good at it. She's very good at it. Um, the budget, just to update everyone, the FY23 budget, you, last month, you adopted the tentative budget, that has been on display at Laverne, no one has stopped by to come see it, but it has been on display at Laverne, um, and in September, that will be the final grant, the final budget will be approved. Um, but a couple updates with that. Um, I wanted to have good news, because I love sharing more and more good news. Um, our EBF funding for this coming school year has gone up by $580,000. We are still Tier 1, um, uh, and we're now at 71% adequacy, so that's amazing, it's absolutely wonderful. The other good news I have, because I really do love bringing good news, is, um, uh, our E, our, sorry, our CPPRT, they released preliminary numbers for CPPRT, which they normally don't do until after you, um, submit your budget to the state. In our budget, we had 400,000, and we're actually getting slightly over a million, or we're slated to get slightly over a million. So great positive news, and that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Jenny, and that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you very much, starting off with the president's report is the finance report, which Jenny basically just gave you. But I just wanted to add one thing. Um, so, when I first started to get involved in our district, at that time, we were 46% funded, and the sixth-worst-funded school district in the state of Illinois. So for us to be in this room discussing a 71% adequacy, uh, percentage, and being able to finally invest, and really being able to, uh, move education forward in our community, um, that is, we've really grown by leaps and bounds, and that is due to EBF, it's due to community support, and I just want to commend the board for making good financial decisions, and, um, for really investing in, in education in our kids. So, thank you. And I will turn it on over to Elizabeth for the legislative report.
For legislation, as we know, our Congress is currently in summer recess, as well as, um, the state legislation, uh, but we did receive something from our USB. A review of recent federal public policy issues affected kindergarten through 12th grade, um, for example, individuals with disabilities Education Act idea. Uh, the Department of Education and Civil Rights and Office of Special Education released new guidelines. In these guidelines, they are intended to help public elementary and secondary schools to fulfill their responsibilities to meet the needs of... to meet the needs of students with disabilities and 504 plans in order to avoid discriminatory use of students' discipline. That's, that's one, that is an important one. And also, in July, Hunt Institute hosted a webinar. And the title of this webinar was Why Educators Are Leaving the Profession and How to Stun the Tide. The topics that they were discussing were addressing issues that happened during COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, many expressed that while salary is an issue, respect for the teaching workforce and the profession are important. Also, they also mentioned the importance of a master teacher mentoring program, as well as Grow Your Own and Apprentice Teacher Program, as Amanda mentioned. And also the child nutrition. So on July 20, a comprehensive evidence-driven reauthorization of federal child nutrition programs was introduced, which is the Healthy Meals and Healthy Kids Act. And that one includes about expanding access to school meals, preserve the future of school meal programs, modernize the special supplemental nutrition program for women, infants, and children, also known as WIC, address food insecurity, improve school meal capacity, and strengthen the child and adult care food programs. And I believe those are already in effect.
Correspondence. I don't think we received any.
Just the applications.
Oh, right. Okay. Thank you very much. There is opportunity for public comment up next. If anybody would like to address the board, please step to the podium, turn on the microphone, and state your name for the record. Hearing none. We will move on to action items for this evening. Up first is the consent agenda. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one member. Items not removed may be adopted by general consent without debate. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll move.
All right. Motion made by Dawn.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jimenez. It was moved to approve the consent agenda. On the roll call, please. I or nay?
Steinfeld.
Aye.
Jimenez.
Aye.
Dawn. Aye. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Dressel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. Up next on the agenda is the, is to approve the appointment of Wendy Gonzalez to the Board of Education. This appointment is necessary to fill a vacancy created due to the resignation of member Sarah Lopez. Can I have a motion to approve Wendy, please? All right. Motion made by Gonzalez, one.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jimenez. All right. It was moved to approve the appointment of Wendy Gonzalez. On the roll call, I or nay, please?
Jimenez.
Aye.
Dawn. Aye. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Dressel.
Aye.
Steinfeld.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Wonderful. Please join us at the board table, Wendy. All right. We'll give you a second to get situated. And then, as is our custom, we will all take the oath of office again as a group. Okay. Is everybody ready? All right. Let's do it.
One, two, three.
I, Wendy Gonzalez, do solemnly swear that I will faithful discharge the duties of the Office of Members of the Board of Education of Berwyn South School District 100 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests as a faithful protector of the school's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that board member has no legal authority as an individual, that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public or meeting. I shall abide by a majority decision of the board while retaining the right to seek change in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education student in the district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for District 100. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to obtain their maximum potential through the sound educational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools to advance the vision of our District 100. And I shall strive to work together, the district superintendent, to lead the school district forward, what has created fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I was wondering if this was coming. Good evening. So my name is Wendy Gonzalez. I am in, I'm a first-generation Latina. I have two little girls, a five-year-old, six-year-old actually, who's a first grader at Pershing, and a rambunctious three-year-old. I have a strong passion for education. I was a special education teacher for 12 years, and I am currently an assistant professor in special education. So I still work in preparing the next, the next generation of educators. I have a strong passion for education and I believe strongly in public education. So I hope that my work here on the board, you know, helps create the best educational experiences, not only for my daughters, but for all the students who attend Berwyn South. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Up next is the election of officer. So we are acting with an acting secretary. And tonight, we need to elect a real secretary. Sorry.
Rude.
I have, Corinne has expressed a willingness. Thank you. Yes. A willingness to take on the role. So seeing as such, I would nominate her for the position. Are there any other nominations? Okay. All right. So hearing no further nominations, then the nominations for the Office of Secretary are closed. And I, at hearing that there's no contest, I have the authority to then just accept the appointment of Corinne Steinfeld as our new board secretary. Congratulations, Corinne.
Thank you very much.
Do you want this now?
All right. Last chance for a public comment. Anybody who wishes to address the board may do so. Please step to the podium and turn on the microphone and state your name for the record.
Sorry, sorry. Never mind. We don't have to vote.
We do not have to vote. This is great practice, though. All right.
Okay, there it is. It's always tricky. I'm Jody Meyer, the principal at Hiawatha. I just, I know Mary kind of already addressed it, but I did wanna thank Mary and George and Paulino and the custodial staff at Hiawatha, as well as our D100 maintenance staff and everybody else. When they say it takes a village, it took a village to get Hiawatha open today. It's still getting some housekeeping done. We'll just leave it at that. But it really took all hands on deck, seven days a week. I don't even know how many hours they've been working at Hiawatha to get it ready. We thank the board for their support in getting our improvements. We know they're gonna be wonderful and it's gonna just create such a nice learning environment. And it was worth it all. I know, George, you weren't there this morning, but to see all those kids re-entering school and, like Mary said, they don't notice a thing that's out of place. We just do. And we know what still is behind the scenes. So thank you again for all your hard work. It's been a very long summer and I know they're extremely exhausted. So thank you.
And thank you for being here, especially on a busy day.
All right. Up next, board comments. I was gonna actually say what Jody just said, but she took the words right out of my mouth. So thank you to our custodial team and to our maintenance team. It has been a wild couple weeks and everyone is recognizing your great work tonight. So anybody else? And we haven't had a chance to officially congratulate and welcome Michelle Howard as the principal, the official principal of Heritage Middle School for the upcoming school year. And also to recognize Jorge Moharo, who has been hired as the assistant principal for Heritage Middle School. So we are excited for our new administrative team. Congratulations. All right. Then hearing no other board comment, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
A motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion made by Jimenez, seconded by, seconded by Joelle Gonzalez. We're gonna have to figure that out. Jay Gonzalez. Okay. Thank you. All right. So motion made by Jimenez, seconded by Jay Gonzalez. It was moved to adjourn the regular meeting at 7:55 PM. On the roll call, aye or nay?
Dressel.
Aye.
Jay Gonzalez.
Aye.
Dawn. Aye. Jimenez.
Aye.
Steinfeld.
Aye.
W. Gonzalez. Motion carried.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a nice day.